Before I have the seat for call roll, I will say Mayor Natal is out with an injury, and Councilwoman McAdams has asked to be excused. I have not heard from Councilwoman Johnson. So, that being said, will the court please call roll?
Mayor Natal. Mayor Pro Tem Snyder. Councilwoman Moreno.
Here.
Councilwoman Benson.
Here.
Councilwoman Carson.
Here.
Councilwoman Teeter.
Here.
Councilwoman Johnson. Councilwoman McAdams. And Councilman Bullock.
Yeah.
Mayor Pro Tem Snyder.
Thank you, ma'am. Colleagues, please rise from your own silence and then join us residing in federal meetings. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, the British and the United Nations, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I will ask staff, please pass around the microphones so everyone in the audience can introduce themselves. Please let the record reflect that Councilwoman Johnson just came in, and it is 6:35. Thank you.
Hi, folks. My name is John Hallory.
The inspector.
Danny Thomas.
Danny Thomas.
Jack Deasy.
Jason Martinez.
Roy Alonzo.
Andrew Calasen.
Alex Los.
Rock and Lucet.
Leonard Newsom.
Rock Long.
You have one second.
Eric Duff.
Dean Lepel.
Joy Bishop.
David Stalzrich.
John Litten.
Karen Keefe, press some recognition.
Ben Dolan.
Ron McCall.
Anthony Stolto.
Larry Wood, please sign up.
Fred Cox, will be first, sir.
John Howard, great technology.
Is Ryan Cordero to do our three nations.
Ricky Morris, Director of Economic Development.
Tom Aker, Deputy Senator.
Thank you very much. As always, I appreciate the audience members who take the time to come to our council meetings, so I thank you for that. Okay, up on the comment roster was being available at the table at the entrance with council chambers for anyone who wishes to address us on any other matter that was on the agenda. Please state your name and address for the record, and you will be reminded that you will be limited for three minutes. I only have one name on the list, and that is Leonard Newsom. Please come forward, sir. Good evening. You'll press the button, sir. Thank you.
Okay.
There you go.
All right. Good evening. Good to see everyone in council. I want to take time off to thank Councilman Vincent, also Mrs. Teeter, and also Mrs. Morris. We had a board meeting that Mr. Vincent and also Mrs. Teeter had a chance to sponsor. It was simply fantastic. What came out of that meeting? Oh, I'm sorry, I must go back. My name is Leonard Newsom, address 10094 Campbell Street. I apologize.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. In that meeting, it came up about the food market. Ms. Morris gave us some very good information. The energy in that community is huge, and again, I want the council to be aware of it. A food market can definitely be there by the year 2012, which is too late. We need to do something very quickly. There's a lot of support. I felt those three and also everyone else did a fantastic job. But in my community, we're definitely in need for it to happen, but I want you to know, Mayor Pro Tem, that there are a lot of folks out there that are willing to have this happen, and we need it. I encourage the council to do everything they can to make a real food possibility, and also make green. It gives a wonderful opportunity for food out there in the Union or northern Commerce City to come up with a food market that can be, to be very green oriented, to be definitely a, in my mind, a truly outstanding project, but example. Again, showing them what can happen. Again, I really appreciate the efforts, and the force was fantastic. It definitely does know about $89 million dollars out there, and also $88 million dollars can afford food for other things out there, going out and dining, but it's good to get some feedback from the community.
Thank you very much. So, we appreciate you being here. Councilwoman Moreno, do you have questions?
Yeah.
You do? Okay.
Mr. Newsom, thank you, as always, for coming to the meetings. I was at Mr. Vincent's board meeting as well, and I agree that that is the number one issue, or number one concern for residents in the north, and it remains the top priority of this council, so I think that it's, you know, there's no shortage of participation in the north, and I think that's terrific. I think that community is really waiting for something. For example, I've had multiple discussions with another gentleman who lives up north, Mr. Scanlon, who is looking to try to get a community garden off the ground. I just think that the amount of participation in the, from the residents in the north is really terrific, and thank you for continuing to push us on the food market issue. It's absolutely long overdue, so thank you for continuing, your continued advocacy on that.
Thank you too, sir, and I do apologize for not recognizing you being here. I do remember seeing you, and you were worse than just share with the council or statements. Again, I just want everyone to know, there's a lot of energy in the northern area. I should repeat, there's a lot of energy, and good wisdom tells us, go ahead and capture it, and capture the part of me that energy and have it work. The future's there, folks. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. I do want to remind council that during citizen communication, and I completely concur with your comments, Councilwoman Moreno, that we are supposed to just address those board staff, because that's the council policy. And, how, Mr. Benson?
I want to thank Mr. Newsom for his comments about our board meeting and what it's a success also, and give a lot of people a lot of information. It's almost an information overload. We went about 30 minutes over, and still didn't cover everything as thoroughly as I wanted to. I'll give a report about that later on, and we'll just point out that we do have, I think he's in the audience tonight, Mr. Stolto, he's trying to open up a small grocery store in Delhi, in the north area, and I'll comment about that later on, about what we can do to help that come to fruition, because we do need it to grocery store, for instance, and just what everybody wants up there, and whether it's small or not, I hope we're going to be able to do what's necessary to bring that grocery store into commerce. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Benson, and I don't have him on the roster for speaking right now, so I'm sure we'll hear more about that a little bit later in the reports. Okay, seeing nothing else, we move on to the, we're going to amend the agenda this evening. We have the absence of two council members this evening, and it's requested that Item 11 on Tab 8 of the agenda regarding council policy number two be postponed to a future date. I would like to entertain a motion to amend the agenda by postponement of the item. Councilwoman Teeter? So moved. Councilwoman Johnson?
Take the motion.
Wonderful. It has been moved and seconded to postpone Item 11 regarding council policy number two to a future date. Is there any discussion? Councilwoman Bullock?
Yes, I was going to ask, who asked for this to be put on the council, I mean, on our, our agenda?
Who asked to have it put on the agenda?
Yes. Yes, I mean, I, I'm...
City Attorney Gayler, could you assist us with that?
The item is placed on the agenda by staff because it was felt that it was appropriate for city council just to review your policy in regards to council policy number two, and so it was just a discussion item, not an action item for you to consider.
Thank you. I mean, it comes in a timely manner, and I'm glad it's here, but I was kind of curious to how it got on the agenda, but staff sees a lot of things that we don't see up here, so thank you, staff. You're beautiful people.
I would agree with you, Councilwoman Bullock. Okay, Councilwoman Benson?
You know, so I asked the same question. It seemed like there's things that surprise me just about every week about how they got on the agenda. Whose decision was it to take this off of the agenda?
Um, go ahead. City Attorney...
I might first address the question. As council knows, we have a committee, an agenda committee, and that Neilan, Todd Maker, I, and the members of City Clerk's office sit on that committee. And what we do each week after a council meeting, meet and discuss what council has indicated an interest in, in the previous night's meeting, and then we try to set an agenda that is somewhat considerate of the time elements, so that you're not here until 1:00, 2:00 o'clock in the morning that happened on one of sole cases. But we take that into account, and then we also take into account the requests of council that you've made in open session, and then sometimes an individual council member will bring to the committee's attention a problem area that we feel is appropriate for the whole council to consider, and in that way, then the agenda is set. So, it's somewhat an informal process, but on the other hand, we try to take into account the concerns of council and what you've indicated, because after all, it is your agenda, your meeting, and that's the way we proceed. Usually those agenda setting meetings try to set not only for the immediate forthcoming meeting, but for a month or even six weeks in advance as to what it looks like should be handled. That includes public hearing process, includes ordinances, resolutions, et cetera.
Well, whose decision was it to take it off of the agenda?
It was a request to take it off of the agenda, Councilwoman Benson. I spoke with City Attorney Gayler earlier and asked him about the evaluation that we were supposed to have this evening, because of course with Councilwoman McAdams being out this evening, there was no way for us to move forward with that, and I also suggested that we could ask how they were okay with moving the council policy discussion to another evening, because we're missing two council people. So, it was merely a suggestion, and that's why I'm asking if the rest of the council would be... I'm not making the decision, I was merely posing the question to the council, is what it was, so I claim responsibility for that. We're asking the question, yeah.
And when I hear the great suggestions of the City Attorney, I just wanted to make you a suggestion.
I just asked if it would be okay, and I'm asking the council down if it would be okay. I'm certainly not making any decisions. Is that everyone's? Yeah, yeah.
I might add, for everybody's benefit, in all fairness to Mayor Pro Tem, she has plans to depart early tomorrow morning on the trip, and she had originally asked to be excused this evening, and council approved that, the excuse absence, if you would call it, the last meeting, and then when the mayor received his injury, and we discussed it with the Mayor Pro Tem, that if she's not there, then we have to go through a process of having the council elect an acting chair, and the City Clerk advised me there was a problem with neither the mayor nor the Mayor Pro Tem being present with handling the voting process, and all things considered. Mayor Pro Tem then said, hey, I'll be there this evening, but on one condition, that you try to streamline the agenda so that I'm not there until wee hours in the morning, so that also was a factor in requesting the council to take that item off the agenda.
Listen, I appreciate that explanation, because sometimes we don't get that kind of an explanation. Things just happen, and I kind of wonder why sometimes, and I'm glad to have that kind of an explanation. Certainly makes sense to me.
Well, I think it's totally legitimate that you would ask that question, and I appreciate you giving us, I need the opportunity to explain why I might have done that, so thank you for asking. Councilwoman Bullock?
I just want to inform the City Clerk and anybody otherwise that I was Mayor Pro Tem for two years, and I didn't know how to handle the voting on the, up here and everything, but as a council, we're going to discuss this tonight and council policy, we're going to put together a policy, so if the mayor and the Mayor Pro Tem are gone, it'll be a rotation basis on how council members are selected to be chair of the meeting from now on, so we won't run into this problem again.
Mr. Bullock, thank you very much for that. I was here when you were on before, and you recall it, yes, you do know how to run a meeting. The problem isn't that, what the challenge is, is that we only cannot create voting boards in our system on the fly. We have to have an advance notice so that we can send the, any roll call vote items to a board, and we need to know that prior to the meeting. We only have, at this time, we only have two boards created. One is when the mayor is seated, and the second is when the Mayor Pro Tem is seated. If there was a vote at council during the council meeting about who was going to chair the meeting when the meeting began, we don't have the opportunity to adjust the electronics or the technological, technology piece of it to accompany council, so your request to speed buttons would not work, nor would we be going, you know, calling for a voice, calling for a roll call vote, vote, excuse me, so that's the challenges we face electronically with a moving board. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Yeah, make sure it's now that we're a little bit behind, and we'll catch up.
And honestly, it's my pleasure to come in. I mean, if I needed, I'm going to be here if I possibly can. I mean, there will be times when I can't be, obviously, but if I can possibly humanly be here, I will be here, so I am committed to doing my job, and I will do what it takes. So, I appreciate everybody to be willing to work with me and then making the little adjustments in the agenda this evening. Councilwoman Benson?
Yes, Mr. Gayler, the charter spells out certain obligations for when the mayor says that Mayor Pro Tem takes over in the mayor's absence. Would, I agree with Mr. Bullock's suggestion, I'm just wondering if that would be in conflict with our charter at all, and if we can do this by policy or resolution? I think it's a good idea if it's known for Mr. Bullock sometime in advance, and maybe she can make the necessary changes, but there are going to be times when maybe that's going to happen, but it hasn't happened since I've been on the council, but there are going to be times when that's going to happen, and we need to deal with that upfront before it does happen. Is that going to be a conflict with our charter?
Let me state what the charter says. The charter simply says, in the absence of the mayor and the Mayor Pro Tem, then the council, by vote of the council, will elect an acting chair. So, whatever, in that regard, you can't choose somebody in advance, because you elect the chair, the acting chair, at a council meeting when the mayor and the Mayor Pro Tem are absent, so I'm not sure what we would have in mind about trying to streamline the process, because you can't choose somebody in advance, like, for example, seniority, or it has to be someone at large, or some criteria like that, because the charter says you elect the person, and...
If that's what's in the charter, then that's what we have to go with.
Right, that's what you do.
But we were absent, Ms. Snyder, tonight, and we would have to allow...
You realize we have to deal with...
Right.
Someone, what we, this has happened on occasion, I don't remember exactly when, but I recall when the meeting was first convened, that I, City Attorney, called for nominations, because at that point, you didn't have anybody to chair the meeting, so I called for nominations. A nomination was made, and you elected one of your members then to serve as chair, and that's the way we did it that evening, and I remember it was, happened to be Scott Jakes that she chose that evening, if any of you recall that particular evening, but the process is spelled out in the charter, so I'm not sure what we could add or subtract from that process. Frankly, it's only happened, I recall, one time in the last several years.
I can't remember a single time, not one time in a year, mentioning in the eight years, that this happens, so it doesn't happen too often.
You know, if that's in our charter, that's our constitution, we can't violate that.
I agree with you. I agree with you, Mr. Benson, thank you.
I also have another question about, we also have the executive session. Whose request was that?
I have a proposal that I wanted to make to the city council, to all of you.
Right.
And I felt that with, at that time, when the decision was first apparently made, council, Mayor Pro Tem Snyder was going to be absent, the mayor was going to be absent, Councilwoman McAdams was going to be absent, and I really wanted to make my proposal to at least more than six of you, and so it was at my request, then the city, Acting City Manager Neilan agreed that it would probably be just as well to have my evaluation next week. We've already postponed it a couple times, but that was really in conjunction with my request that I'd be able to have my evaluation and my proposal considered by the city council at least more than just what appeared to be coming this evening.
Well, you know, I can understand the reasons behind it, but isn't it the province, the sole province of the council to make that kind of a decision?
You're right, that is true.
But I guess I just don't understand how these things happen. It's not the first time this sort of thing has happened. Well, I mean, we're not supposed to usurp the authority of the staff, and I don't want the staff trying to take over our job as the council leader, so I just, I would just like to see people be a little more careful going along with our charter, and, well, maybe I have division of responsibility.
Maybe I could take some responsibility, but the choice was is to have everybody come in 5:30 and say, we're not doing this. I did call Dominic, because he was going to be the moderator for the, for my evaluation. However, I could have, in the alternative, requested that when the council convened at 5:30, that we, that we continue the whole thing until 6:30, we follow him, but to save you all coming in, that was a decision made on the spot, so if I've been wrong in that regard, I do apologize, and I am aware of that concern and that practice, and we'll certainly try to avoid that in the future, but we do need to take into account the city council's conveniences and your situation, where you came in an hour early for nothing.
Well, then, in order to make this constitutional, so to speak, I will move that we change the executive session to next week.
That kind of motion?
That would certainly be in order, as appropriate, in order to make it a matter of record, otherwise the agenda committee would have just put it on the agenda, but this is probably a better process, because anytime you continue something that's already on the agenda, the better process is if the city council make it a matter of record for the minute, so that motion certainly is in order.
Okay, you have the motion. Yeah, I was just going to say, thank you.
What is the motion on the floor?
Thank you, Laura, I appreciate that. We do have a motion second on the floor to move item 11 to Tab 8. So, we could just get through that one first, and then go ahead and move on to the next one, would that be appropriate?
That would be...
Okay, great. So, Dominic, did you have anything before that? Okay. So, I have a motion, the second, to amend the agenda regarding Tab 8, policy number two be postponed to a future date. All those in favor, sitting in five by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, and now we have a motion by Councilwoman Benson, and a second by Councilwoman Teeter.
Can I get that motion again, please? It was a motion to move the executive session scheduled for tonight to next Monday night.
Okay. So, it's been moved, seconded, to move that executive session with City Attorney Gayler to next Monday night.
Mayor Pro Tem, just a quick...
Oh, sure, of course, I'm sorry.
I know that the process does seem tedious, but I do agree with the president that those formalities should be recognized and followed, so it's good that we're doing this.
I agree with you, Councilwoman Moreno, and I appreciate Councilwoman Benson bringing that to our attention. Thank you. Okay, so, it's removed and seconded, all those in favor, sitting in five by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion passes, next Monday night. Okay. Having gotten past that, tonight, the city council would like to give recognition to the Boys and Girls Club at Kearney Middle School in Commerce City. Would Acting City Manager Net Neillan please invite the staff member to come forward and present the certificate?
Thank you, another good news moment, and I'd like to have Ms. Ring Cordera, who's been active on the project of Boys and Girls Club, come up and talk to council.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, I'm Mayor Pro Tem, and I'm here for the council. In recognition to the Boys and Girls Club at Kearney Middle School in Commerce City, the Boys and Girls Club at Kearney Middle School has achieved a number of highlights while serving the most at-risk children of Commerce City. As their mission suggests, the Boys and Girls Club works to inspire and enable young people, especially those from disadvantaged circumstances, to realize their full potential as capable, responsible, and caring citizens. Among the highlights for the previous year of service, their programs achieved the following. The Boys and Girls Club at Kearney Middle School in Commerce City has seen an increase of 88% in service hours, 30% increase in total membership. A Commerce City Boys and Girls Club participant won first place in the Southwest Regional Digital Arts Festival for the entry, "The Nature of Love" in graphic design. Two of the 18 image makers' photography contests, and one of the fine art exhibit city winners were from the Commerce City Club. Forty-nine Commerce City participants received entry into the Gates Camp this past summer, where they participated in activities such as hiking, canoeing, rock climbing, archery, hands-on environmental games, and other outdoor activities. Seventy-six Commerce City youth took part in the "What Moves You? Play 60" program, where they collectively participated in 478 hours of physical activity. Lastly, Kearney Middle School club members won in several categories such as math, spelling, geography, trivia, and science at the 2010 Boys and Girls Club State Education Day event. At this point, I would like to invite to the microphone Jason Martinez, who is the Commerce City Branch Director for the Boys and Girls Club, and some young men and women that came up there.
Okay, would the council like to drop you down at the podium to present the search terms, would be good? Okay, that'd be great. Would you like to come down and join us and tell us? Thank you.
As mentioned, my name is Jason Martinez, I'm the Branch Director at the Commerce City Boys and Girls Club at Kearney Middle School, and on behalf of the staff and members there, I would like to thank Commerce City and City Council for recognizing our services to youth in Commerce City. It's this recognition that shows your dedication to our, shows your dedication and ongoing support of youth services within Commerce City. I very much appreciate that. We'd also like to mention, you know, our hopes for one day to still expand, provide further services to a larger portion of Commerce City, but at this point, we're still doing well over that Kearney Middle School. As Vincent mentioned earlier, the highlights that were given, it's just a small fraction of all the great things that are happening on a daily basis, so at any time, I'd like to invite anyone in this room to come by for a tour. If you know any kids who would like to become members, come by, give them that tour, and answer any questions that you may have. So, again, thank you very much for this recognition. So again, thank you very much for this recognition.
Councilmember Raynor?
Again, I just want to applaud the great work that the Boys and Girls Club is doing. I had a chance, when I was working as a legislative aide at the state Capitol, to go to a Boys and Girls Club reception from kids all around the state, and didn't know, but apparently Senator, Senator, one of our senators, Michael Benn, was also a member of the Boys and Girls Club. So I think it just shows how far you can go with their help. And it's a great program, and I really value the work they do in our community.
Thank you. Councilwoman Vincent?
Yes, I want to give a question, Raynor, to the staff. I think the Boys and Girls Club is a great organization. When I was growing up, it wasn't present. When I was growing up, and I remember going to the Boys, it was called the Boys Club back then. Now it's kind of more like the Cray, the Boys and Girls Club. This was back in the fifties. We did have girls, but it was just the Boys Club back then. And I would ask, you know, the statement was made that at some point, you're going to need to move out of Kearney to get more space. When do you think that will occur? You know, I just want to point out, you know, we did try to build a stand-alone Boys and Girls Club, and that was shot down for more than one. And I just remember a lot of talk was had at that time about the fact that this money is available from other sources. And here we are, two years later, we don't have any money from any other source that's being directed towards building a stand-alone Boys and Girls Club. And I guess that would be something I might bring up later on, because I still think that that admission stack, visitor stacks, is not really a good way to finance it. But we're not anywhere. We have about two million dollars in the bank right now to build a Boys and Girls Club if that passed. Because it is, we have nothing. No plans for the future for Boys and Girls Club, no money, nothing. So, thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilwoman Vincent. Acting city manager, everyone. Sorry to bring you in on this, but actually, we've had a few meetings with the committee, and I'm a part of that committee. And there have been several members that have come, and Miss, I believe, is a part of that as well. But we have actually been having ongoing conversations about the future of the Boys and Girls Club, and what we're going to do. So I was wondering if you wouldn't mind just providing a brief update on where we're at with that.
I think it'd be appropriate to have Miss come up. Maybe give a quick overview, but I think it's intended to have it as a study session, I think, for council.
I was, I had the understanding it would be good. Since Councilwoman Vincent brought it up, I thought maybe we could just give a short synopsis of where we're at. That would be great, thank you, Miss.
Good evening, council, again. Yes, there has been a group of stakeholders that have been meeting since the city was awarded the appropriation back in January. And there has been some forward movement. And I have requested an agenda item which will come at the end of October. And Councilwoman Vincent, you'll get, I think your question's answered in terms of what we think is the ideal road to follow in terms of having an expansion for the Boys and Girls Club in the city.
Thank you, Miss. Councilwoman Vincent, I wanted you to know that we actually have been having those ongoing conversations. And since I was one of the two members that was on that, you know, I just didn't want you to think that it was dead. It actually isn't, it's very, it's alive and well. And we have certainly been having those talks and those conversations. So there's actually some movement definitely going on. Councilwoman Vincent, Vincent, did you have more to add?
Yes, how much money?
How much money?
How much money do we have, because we're building a stand-alone Boys and Girls Club? I mean, just within a hundred thousand, so to speak.
Hi, well, my understanding is we have the appropriation of, I think, seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
So that's what we had four years ago, really.
You don't have that information at the presentation?
Yes, we do.
That was obtained for us by Congressman Proton about three, four years ago. So nothing's changed.
I think that was requested at that time. We received it in January.
That was what I wanted to... Nothing's really changed. We have meetings and talk going on, but nothing has really happened. We have no money. It's not going to happen until we get the money. And I don't know where we're going to get the money. I hope that maybe your synopsis will explain to me, at least, where we're going to get that money, Miss. So I hope it will. Thank you.
Well, we look forward to your presentation, Miss. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to Resolution two thousand and ten dash forty-four. There are two resolutions that were not included on the consent agenda because they require a separate voice vote. For the first resolution is two thousand and ten dash forty-four, a resolution approving conveyance of certain city-owned property of Brighton School District twenty-seven J, Return Mary Elementary School site. I will now ask city attorney Taylor to explain Resolution two thousand and ten forty-four.
In the way of background, this particular site was originally vacant land. It was part of a flat then, that was approved as a part of a subdivision by the city. And on that flat, the ground was dedicated to Commerce City, the city of Commerce City. The intent was that part of that site would be school property, which would include playgrounds, and part of it would be for a park site for Commerce City. School was built, and ten acres then have been set aside for playground area. And then another ten acres then is set aside for city park area. So in accord with the agreement with the school district, the ten acres that is to be used for playgrounds is to be owned by the school district. And this resolution then follows through with that intent and authorizes the conveyance to the school district of the ten acres to be used for the playground in conjunction with the school building site. And ten acres will be reserved then for the city of Commerce City to be used as a park site. But the two sites are adjacent to each other, playground and park site, so it makes for a nice amenity totaling twenty acres. And so a passage of this resolution will accomplish that goal.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I will now entertain a motion at this time, Councilwoman Teeter.
Yes, move to approve Resolution two thousand and ten dash forty-four.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Take the motion.
Thank you, sir. It's been moved, seconded, to approve Resolution two thousand and ten dash forty-four. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Title reads, "Resolution two thousand and ten dash forty-four, Conveyance of City-Owned Property to School District twenty-seven J, Return Mary Elementary School Site."
Thank you, sir. May I have a voice vote, please? All those in favor, speaking in five, I say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes to two thousand and ten forty-four. Our next resolution is two thousand and ten dash fifty-four, a resolution approving a conservation easement and authorizing conveyance of the easement to Adams County. I will now entertain a motion at this time. Councilwoman Teeter?
Yes, move to approve Resolution two thousand and ten dash fifty-four.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Take the motion.
It has been moved, seconded, to approve Resolution two thousand and ten dash fifty-four. Is there any discussion by council? Councilmember Raynor?
Mr. Raynor, I just had a question about, in our packet, it showed that the... Is it the easement that is going to be approximately a hundred acres? Is that the total of the easements? Or is that...
Mayor Proton, Councilwoman Raynor, yes, the easement will be total of about a hundred acres, which is the amount that we're getting from shells part of donation.
Okay, and all of that hundred acres will be used, was slated for use as a regional stormwater facility?
That is correct. Some portion of it may be of the alignment of your district once the roads, you know, the reservoirs can be built, but primarily the purpose is regional retention.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Loack?
I think acres don't sit out. Can you also give a little brief update? After that conservation easement is in full effect for stormwater drainage, what are some of the benefits to Commerce City residents from that?
In addition to regional stormwater retention, the site will also act as open space. It's a part of, and adjacent to the Fresh Creek Greenway. That's proposed a trail which will link to the perimeter trail around the refuge. We are, we get reserve, some ability to have passive use of that site. A couple of probably shelters or benches, but not really an active site, because at any time, it could be underwater.
Thank you.
Okay, there's no more discussion. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Title reads, "Resolution two thousand and ten dash fifty-four, Resolution approving a conservation easement and authorizing conveyance of easement to Adams County."
Thank you, sir. May I have a voice vote, please? All those in favor, speaking in five, I say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next one's ordinance is on first reading, and the first one is ordinance eighteen seventeen. So there are two ordinances on first reading. The first is eighteen seventeen, an ordinance amending the two thousand and ten budget by the U.S. Department of Justice, COPS Technology Grant in the amount of one hundred and ten thousand dollars. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address council on this ordinance? Is there anyone on council who wishes to... Any questions? No? Okay. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve, or I'm sorry, to introduce ordinance eighteen seventeen by Councilwoman Teeter. Councilmember Raynor?
Move to introduce ordinance eighteen seventeen by Councilwoman Teeter.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Loack?
Second motion.
It has been moved, seconded, to approve ordinance eighteen seventeen on first reading. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Title reads, "An Ordinance Amending the Two Thousand and Ten Budget for the City of Commerce City, Colorado, by the recognition of the U.S. Department of Justice, COPS Technology Grant, in the amount of one hundred and ten thousand dollars to fund the purchase of thirty-eight digital trunk radios and two interoperable communications gateways to coordinate emergency services personnel during emergency responses, and the authorization of the expenditure thereof."
Thank you, sir. I'll now have a roll call vote, please. Thank you, we have seven yeses and zero noes. Motion passes. The next is ordinance eighteen thirty-nine, an ordinance amending the cable television system franchise agreement between the City of Commerce City and Comcast Colorado LLC to extend the terms of the franchise. Will acting city manager Metne Nealon please explain ordinance eighteen thirty-nine?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is one of the activities that I'd like to give accolades to Greg Graham, who's at our city attorney's office, and John Howard. They participate in the Greater Metro Telecommunication Consortium. And that consortium is looking into the renewal of the Comcast franchises all across the metro area and even statewide. The legal support of that consortium is by former mayor, Mayor Ken Feldman, who used to be the primary mayor of Urbata. And for the past year, there's been discussions with Comcast to look at what would the franchise renegotiations look like. And we've been acting as a collaborative group with all the other municipalities within the metro area. And with that, they have been working diligently with Comcast and come to a recommendation that extend cities' franchise agreements for three more years, and that the city of Aurora and the city in county Denver work on several negotiations. I'd also like to highlight in this extensions to two thousand and thirteen. As we had discussion last week, we're talking about the funding for Channel Eight, and where was the funds coming from for all the capital infrastructure so we can live-streaming Channel Eight. And this is where the funding, what we call PAG, public education and government funding, is money comes from through this franchise agreement. So today, the council will be asked to just continue it, about negotiations as a greater we. And then staff will be coming back in about three years, if not sooner, with something that's from a metro perspective on us, and still deserves Commerce City's interest.
Thank you, appreciate that. Councilmember Raynor?
Thanks for that explanation, Ms. Nealon. I did have a question, because I wasn't entirely clear on, by franchise, do we mean that we use Comcast broadband service exclusively as Commerce City? Like for our, for, I was just not sure. Do we run by franchise?
As a matter of fact, that is correct. The franchise agreement is not exclusive, but it works that way because Comcast is the, is the entity that provides the service, and we have that franchise with them. Following up what acting city manager Nealon said, the franchise agreement, as you would surmise, is in place. And what we're doing is extending the franchise that we have for three years in order that we can work along with the other cities in conjunction with the consortium to make the franchises expire somewhat simultaneously, and then we'll have a franchise agreement in place in three years that corresponds with what the other cities are doing so that each one doesn't have a separate, independently negotiated franchise agreement.
So I guess my question is, for example, when we broadcast our live meetings on Channel Eight, they are available to Comcast customers, however, not available to, for example, people on our city that have direct TV. Is that something that we can negotiate with Comcast? Or is that something that's just kind of included in the package?
In the past, the franchise agreement is only pertaining to Comcast, though we're putting a list of issues together, and that's something we'll explore and see with the legal ramifications of that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Vincent?
It's probably a matter of federal law that no franchise can be exclusive. It has to be, so as a matter of law, it's non-exclusive. As a matter of fact, it is.
And also provides that in our charter.
Yeah, they would have to, when we find out if it's available. Comcast has to be required to do that, but it's just so expensive to do that. So as a matter of fact, it is exclusive. Was any research done into... You know, we have a metro area here, we have Colorado Springs and the Buffalo. I have found that there are different programming packages available in some other cities. Have we done any research into what those programming packages are to be assured that right now, before we renew, we're getting all the channels that say people in Colorado Springs are getting people in others? I know with regard to E S P N U, the Springs had it about a year before we had it. We finally got it first part of July.
The programming part is, you've had a basic service and then extended services. And as each city originally negotiated a franchise agreement, some of that was discussed. And that is the reason, if you're the first out of the gate, you make up with an idea and not the benefit of other ideas. And that's why we're all trying to get on the same schedule. So you're negotiating in a collective we. Instead of us going out and negotiating, then the next entity negotiates something to go... We should be thought of that. And then the next one comes out. So we're trying to get a collective we in this discussion, and Comcast is open to that.
Well, I can understand why we're making, just for your contracts, that we have been having more discussions. But I think that there are some things we can probably do in that. can probably do now, at least raise the issue with them. There are things that maybe the Dish Network or, uh, direct TV have the Comcast done. I don't think there are very many. I have Comcast, I think it's better than the dishes, but, um, I just, I just think to just say, okay, we're going to blanket, and a blanket manner would do this without looking into what the channel lineup is. We have the ability to negotiate about what we're getting here based on what other cities in the state have, and we shouldn't be getting anything, uh, less. You know, sometimes they'll tell you, well, that's, we're building out our fiber optic network, um, it's going to be six months and then it might take a year, but I just think, shouldn't we have some kind of discussion with them before we just sign off on this?
All we're not negotiating right now. All we're asking is to move forward and extend our current franchise agreement so that we can have these types of conversations. Otherwise, the city is at, by themselves, and it'd be Greg Graham on our benefit, would be negotiating with Comcast to get the franchise agreement done by November, early November. And we do not feel like we have adequate information to do the best job, the residents of the City of Commerce City in the negotiations. And so this extends our current franchise agreement just another three years.
When you say we're not negotiating right now, why aren't we negotiating right now?
Well, as you well know, once you open the door to negotiations, that's a two-way street. So we're asking for, they're in a position to be asking for.
Well, I know, you know, unless you, unless you get a formal offer and, uh, so, you know, contract lawyers, discussions can be had with people without actually negotiating or making offers in counteroffer. You know, here's what we're thinking about, can you do this false without actually saying we're not going to do it unless you do this, not giving anybody an ultimatum. And I just think to, see us just say, okay, we're going to renew this for three years because we want to pay back on Aurora and Denver doing three years in a row, or should we just automatically renew this for three years?
Well, the other option is if we don't renew it, then we're not in a very good negotiating position either.
Well, you know, what would it cost Comcast if, uh, they cut off everybody and not get out of Commerce City? They're not about to do that. Cost them a lot of money. They've got a big infrastructure built up in the city and fiber op, fiber optics network. They're not about to say, well, we don't have an agreement in place, we're just going to cut everybody off if you ask for no additions. You know, this is an extremely competitive business. They want this business. I just don't see how it hurts us to raise some issues instead of just going out and saying, well, mine, we'll just extend our contract for three years and no discussion, no negotiation about anything. Um, I, I just, I don't like that, but, because there are things that we can do. And the only way that we can put pressure on them is in this way, no individual calling up and saying, I want you to get this programming. That doesn't have any effect at all on the dishes or Comcast until they get maybe 10,000 requests for something. Because this, the city is the one that negotiates for us, everybody does the Comcast and so forth.
Well, that's, except for the fact that, as you may know, we're a member of the consortium. And, uh, as a member of that consortium, uh, we have the right, uh, to have the attorney, who is Ken Feldman, who's the expert in this entire area, uh, represent us with, uh, with regard to any franchise, as he does with any other city who is a member of the consortium. So, the school of thought is, is that rather than us go out there and start trying to negotiate anything on our own, that we keep it as a, a unit and as a team and use our best expertise, uh, to negotiate in tandem with the other cities. Now, others, some of the cities do not have the same expiration date as we, and that's why this three-year date was chosen, because that makes it correspond with the expiration date of the other cities. So then we're all in the same package. Now, I appreciate what you're, what you're saying and where you're, you're going with this discussion, however, when our franchise agreement, what it basically does is tells Comcast, and in order for them to use our rights away, they have to pay certain things. Now, if the franchise agreement were to expire, it's not to say that they couldn't continue to provide the service, what they would be in a position of not being able to use our right away, and then we're in the, in the difficult situation that they would probably, in order to keep their service going, have to condemn and start, um, uh, end the domain proceedings in order to use our, our, our right away, because we're not going to give permission for that right away. So you can see that kind of entanglement that we would be in.
Yeah, that's one of the, we have to have some kind of ultimatum, that's not what I'm saying.
Yeah, right. And I appreciate that, that we're not given the ultimatum, but the problem is, is when we open the door and say we want to negotiate on our own, then what we are involved with doing is telling the consortium, we're going to press ahead at this time. And the consortium is saying, asking us, hey, let's do this as a group, that way we can assert more authority, have a stronger negotiating position if we're all together.
What cities may have a consortium?
As I said, most in the metro area, in matter of fact, because of the negotiating respect that has been received, it's, it's looking at extending past the Greater Metro area and areas in the western slope and southern Colorado want to be part of this, but I don't have all the names of this.
Well, you know, I, so I know Ken Feldman, and I know what his experience is in cable TV, a certain amount of respect for his legal ability. Has anybody asked him about what I'm talking about?
Yes, we have, we've had, in fact, we had a meeting, I was present, uh, at, at least one meeting, like, and you were present at other meetings involving Ken Feldman, and he's been actively involved in these discussions. So he's fully aware of what we're talking about, and in fact, it's that the consortium's request that we all join together rather than trying to negotiate anything independently.
Somebody specifically asked a question, uh, can, if there are channels that, uh, maybe both, uh, or Colorado Springs is getting the bracket in Commerce City, would it be to manage to try to at least get a couple of channels added to our channel lineup in this extension? Has anybody asked him that specific question?
The discussions happened at the Greater Metro, but to say, have, have I personally asked that question to Ken Feldman? No. I, I think there's opportunities that will open up in the coming years that we could see benefit from, and it may not take the franchise agreement to get some of the behavior to change.
Should we have Ken Feldman here?
Okay, I hope you're finished, Councilwoman Benson. I have, Greg, before you finish? Okay, Councilwoman Johnson.
Yeah, I'm going to make a call.
Oh, okay. And Councilmember Enno, you want discussion? You want discussion? Okay, go ahead.
Uh, I think Mr. Benson brings up a good point, but I do agree with Steph. It's a really smart move to align ourselves with the two largest cities in the metro area, because that way you're, you're more inclined, you're more likely to get concessions that way. Um, I think it's no different than when we formed like the North Metro Transit Alliance. You get more when you bring up a strong team to the table. Uh, so I, I, I'm in complete agreement with this, and I, I think it's a smart move.
Thank you, sir. Happy to be in your seat, Neill. I was under the impression also from some discussions that I've heard, it's that the consortium is looking to certainly go beyond the borders of who's currently involved, that there are a lot of outer mic areas that are interested in getting in on it as a part of it. So that is, and then you just mentioned that, so what I was hearing about that is correct, yeah? Yes? Okay, great, wonderful. Okay, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address counsel on this ordinance? Seeing none, okay. I have, um, motion from Councilwoman Johnson. Do I have second? Councilwoman Teeter?
Second motion.
If we move the second to a quick ordinance, 1839, Felicity, turning, please read the title.
Title of the ordinance reads, ordinance 1839, an ordinance amending the cable television system franchise agreement between the City of Commerce City and Comcast of Colorado, number nine, LLC, to extend the term of the franchise.
Thank you, sir. I'll roll call vote, please. I think we have, uh, six guesses and one no. Councilwoman Benson being the no vote, and the motion doesn't pass. Thank you. Did you have a comment, Councilwoman?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment, and the reason I'm voting no is because I don't have enough information about the yes or no, so I'm voting no.
Okay, that's certainly a prerogative, sir. Okay. Next, we have a presentation to the Commerce City Council, like Adams, 14th School District, Brighton, 77 J School District, Scott Adams Fire Protection District, and the Adams County Board of Commissioners. I will now ask Acting City Manager Maylin to invite Steph to come forward and introduce the members of the following organizations to bring their presentations.
Um, again, Acting Commissioner Cordiero, our Intergovernmental Relations Manager, who's been working diligently on this issue, and I'd like you to introduce our speakers.
Mr. Cordiero.
Good evening, Members of Council. At the council meeting on August 2nd, I believe, Council wanted Steph to, um, invite members of the local boards and commissions to present on the estimated impact should one or all three of the three valid measures, uh, Amendment 60 and 61, Proposition 101 pass, what would be the, what would those impacts look like on their specific boards? So I would like to invite, right now, Superintendent Rod Blunt from Brighton School District 27J to go as their representative.
Good evening, sir. Thank you for being here.
Madam Mayor, and members of council, thank you so much. I very much appreciate the opportunity on behalf of School District 27J to give you factual information with regards to each one of these entities and the potential impacts that they would have on School District 27J. And as you are aware, and 27J is, has always been appreciated, a little partnership that we have had with Commerce City and for a number of years, the largest portion of our growth. And if you know, the 27J remains the fastest-growing school district within the state of Colorado. As we begin to take a look at this, I decided not to put the, uh, the PowerPoint together, but more for the less to have a conversation and provide you with the factual information that's been provided by my staff so that you're aware of the impact to our school district. 101 has an impact of $2.7 million each fiscal year for 27J, based on a $103 million annual budget. Over the course of the last few years, we've experienced a reduction in our specific ownership taxes anyway, according to payments and those types of things received from the county. Approximately three years ago, the, the general fund budget for specific ownership tax in 27J, ladies and gentlemen, was $3.2 million. It is now about $2.9 million. It will be reduced about $2.7 million should Proposition 101 be successful. This is in addition to a 6.5% cut that we received last year into our general fund. Now, Amendment 60 would have the greatest impact upon this 27J, an estimated annual negative impact of $10.6 million. And we've amortized this over the course of, of the 20, or excuse me, the 10-year phase of the period, but for about a little over 10% of our budget each and every year. The other piece that we need to look at are the mitigating factors that come along with this. The fact that we would be required each and every year to come back, or in each and every instance, to reduce the mail levy based on paying off certain pieces. 27J currently has 15,000 students, approximately 8,000 students ride a bus each and every day. The average bus is costing us about nine, $90,000. So without having the availability of the general fund to be able to write a check for those, we do lease payments. So as we go through and we add buses to our fleet, each time that we reduce the debt that we incur on a lease payment, we would have to go back and, and reduce then our general fund allocation as well. So as we begin to look at the life cycle of this, uh, proposed amendment, the impact upon 27J would be an annual revenue loss currently projected at $10.6 million each and every year. And then we move on to Amendment 61. Now, please remember that 27J is the fastest-growing school district in the state. It would take, based on the 10% assessed value limitation that we, that would be put into place if this was passed, because the assessed value limitation right now is 25%. For 27J, our school district, the fastest-growing school district in the state, to get down to the 10% margin would take 27J 13 years. We would have a capping on our assessed value, uh, debt capacity of 71 million. We're currently at 254 million because of our growth. Please remember that in, in the year 2000, 27J had 5,246 kids in. Here we are 120 months later, and we are knocking on the door of 15,000 kids today. Now, let's look at the future of the, there's a passage of Amendment 61. It would take us 10 years, according to our finance department, to get to that 10% of... During this same time period, based on independent audit of our projected growth, then by a firm on Boulder, 27J in that 13-year time period would have 31,000 students. So we would have no debt capacity during that time period, we would essentially double in size. So I, once again, I appreciate, and I want to make sure I'm courteous and respectful of your time, but I want to make sure that you realize and, and we provide you factual information of what the impacts of, of these three amendments would have on our school district. And with that, I'd be happy to answer your questions before I come to the other presentation.
Councilwoman Benson.
Yes, thanks, Doctor Blunt, for those numbers. I want to ask you a question about, say, bus leases. The passage of these would affect the district's ability to pay those leases, wouldn't it?
Yes, because once the leases were, the devils are used, we wouldn't have to, we would use the mail levy and then go back just, we'd have to go back to voters just to buy more buses to transport kids.
And on the mail levy over rise, which we've got a chart over here, you have to go back to 92 levels.
Yes.
I think so. Although, we don't get very much in the L V O, we probably get less than any other metro district level.
Yes.
55,000, I mean.
Fifty, yeah, we get $55 a year compared to some of our, compared to some of our neighbors.
Our 68 and 71.
Yes.
You see, that's something that, uh, I've heard people make the argument, well, aren't these things unconstitutional? And the point is, if they pass, if 60, 61 pass, they will be the constitution.
That's true.
And they say that any other constitutional provisions in conflict with them is superseded. However, there's a provision in the U.S. Constitution that you can't do anything that's going to impair the ability to enforce a contract. And that's what I'm thinking somebody's going to raise, um, after these passes, because as you know, either the state senate, the state house, or the governor have the ability to say questions to the Colorado Supreme Court, so they have to answer. And I'm sure that that's going to be one of those questions. I don't know how that's going to come out, but it seems to me like that's a constitutional issue that's going to have to be considered, because it's going to impair the ability of any candidate to pay back this existing law instruction.
Well, and sir, you bring up a good point, because I, I believe that that question and many others will be forwarded immediately after the, uh, the election, depending on that outcome. That's also part of the reason that we decided to place a question on the ballot as well, not knowing that potential outcome wasn't conflicting with any one of these amendments put on the, the ballot. We decided that, I believe those questions will be asked by reasonable people, and we see the reasonable reply, and, uh, we will move forward.
Well, thank you for being here, Senator.
My pleasure.
Thank you. Councilwoman Carson?
Um, thank you, Doctor Blunt, for coming to give a point. I always flip the wrong way. Um, you know, out here, talking to citizens, uh, one of the number one things that I hear, the, the state will pass the ballot. I don't know, um, any way to explain to him better than have you explain, um, you know, it's one of the things that we all know that most have a high You know, it's one of the things that we all know that most have us behind this house that was never funded, when there's no money, there's no money. Amendment 23, never fully learned, correct?
Yes.
Oh, I don't understand that logic, because if the state has no money, I don't know how you go to them and get them to backfill.
And that's a wonderful point and a great question, because we have the same issue with the race to the top dollars. The legislature put in the gavias with regards to race to the top, mandated certain things that happen in school, hoping that they would receive the funding. But if some funding didn't come through, yet the mandates were still here. And I think the piece with regards to the comments, because I've heard that in conversations that I've had across the state. If these pass, the economic impact will be felt far beyond the classical. It'll be, it'll be felt in the state legislature with regards to coming back and looking at the revenue that they have to leave in place. And while it is quite accurate that there is a piece of law that, where the state has to backfill, the dollars that cannot be raised locally, for the state of Colorado to do that would cost about $1.6 billion in order to make this, the 178 school districts in the state whole. Now, I don't know if you have, but I certainly have not read anything coming across my computer in your newsprint or on TV that would suggest that the state of Colorado has anywhere close to $1.6 billion in their resources. In fact, more than likely in the state of Colorado this year for public education, we will receive no less than a rescission on the edge of jobs line. So the state has to fill it back, but if they don't have the resources, they're not going to be able to do so. Here's a good example of that. Over the course of my two decades in the, as a superintendent, the reimbursement rate for special education costs in the state of Colorado was never to dip below 80 cents on the dollar. It has been my experience over that 20 years that it has never exceeded 27 cents on the dollar. And I believe the same thing will occur here.
Now, thank you. I think that explanation that my career, I think, taught any of the people.
If you have other folks that have that question, they're absolutely welcome to give me a call.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Carson. Councilwoman Bullock.
My, my only remarks more than, when you look at the impact just on schools, and we're just talking about schools now. We haven't got the transportation, we haven't got the prisons, we haven't got any of the others, and we're talking about a $1.6 billion deficit. And then add the backfill for roads and that, I mean, we know we don't have $1.6 billion, so how much more do, are we not going to have that's going to be lumped onto the back? It's just, I mean, if you look at the cause and effect of this, these three amendments, it is devastating. They are actually ungetting business for this state that is going to drive not only education out, but what business would want to come here after seeing that being passed in this state? Economic development would come to a standstill, and it's not like seniority, last hire, first hire, everybody's looking over. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bullock. Councilwoman Aaron.
Thank you, Dr. Blunt, for coming and presenting tonight. 27J is in a unique and, to be frank, scary place. The rate of your funding is not keeping up with your population growth, with your students growing and the need for more schools and more resources. So, you know, we all need to do our part as a part of this community to make sure that every child in our community is well-educated, every child gets those opportunities. I think what's so lost sometimes in this discussion is how everything is connected. I think the biggest economic driver in our state is education, is that you need to have a well-educated workforce in order for businesses to want to come here. Like Councilman Bullock said, businesses are going to look at our state and look at what we're doing to our type of education system, and they're going to say, no, thank you. Because if we're not making the education of our kids a priority, then what are we doing? I think, you know, it's all tied together, and economic development, if you want to see more of it than fund education, make sure that these children have well-built schools and resources to go to to be able to succeed.
Well, again, you bring up a good point, sir, and the fact that in the last six months, 27J is 159 out of 178 school districts when it comes to funding in the state of Colorado. And we have had an absolute commitment to our communities and to the elected officials within our communities to make sure that when you go out and look for a skilled workforce, that you look no further than your own backyard. The cumulative effect of these of all three are passing would be a reduction in 27J, who's currently 159 out of 178 school districts, would be an additional loss of $950 per student. While we added 766 kids this school year, we anticipate adding 835 kids next school year, and we anticipate adding over 1,000 kids to 27J in the fall of 2012.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Councilwoman Benson, did you have anything else?
Yeah, I just want to say we kind of be careful up here about urging a yes or no vote, and maybe something, well, Dr. Blunt has given us a lot of facts on which we can rely on, and that's how it has to be done in one of these meetings. That said, of course, the price will play in Texas in two weeks.
I believe it's in Texas.
Well, okay, you're going to give it anyway.
It's just, when you sell it?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. Blunt, for taking your time to be here this evening and helping to educate us. Thank you very much.
And you have the opportunity.
Absolutely. And I do think Councilwoman Benson does bring up a very good point. We do all have to be reminded that we have to be careful as elected officials, and I'm sure City Attorney Galen would wrap me up on that, that we are really in a condition to take the information, not making public statements as to our personal support on the issue, or whatever the others. So even though I know we all have strong feelings, as does, I hope, the majority of people in Colorado, but we do have to be careful. And again, I thank you, Dr. Blunt, for taking your time. Mr. Cordiero will be next.
And Mayor of the town, and also council, I would like to invite John Albrecht with Adams County School District 14.
Good evening, Mr. Albrecht.
Mayor Proton Snyder, council members, city staff, members of the audience, thanks for having me here tonight to talk about some very important issues for voters in November. Pleased to be here to provide the Adams 14 perspective, and followed by Dr. Blunt, who provides us some very good information about what it looks like in 27J if these three valid measures should pass. First, just wanted to give you a quick piece of background information about the state of school funding in Colorado. Dr. Blunt mentioned specifically about school funding in 27J, where they rank, according to the best estimates, Colorado ranks somewhere below 40th in the state's amount of funding of public education. So each year, all school districts, 27J and Adams 14, will work very carefully to maximize the funds that they do have to serve all the students in their district. As you can see in this graph, that the state of school funding in Colorado has not been detailed in recent years, and I can guarantee that this trend line continues in the downward fashion over the recent years, as I'm sure you're all aware and have read headlines around school funding in Colorado. In Adams 14, the 2011 budget reflects a decrease in general fund school funding of $1,971,008. We reduced that 4% in our general fund from the year our expenditures, so we have been in the position of cutting costs in recent years. As we move into the specific valid measures and their impact on us, you can see Proposition 101 really is built around the auto tax. So as you see in this picture, it doesn't really matter if you own a 1968 Malibu or a 2010 Malibu, everybody pays some taxes, specific ownership tax, to register for that automobile every year. The first sentence of Proposition 101 reads, "This voter-approved revenue change shall be strictly enforced to reduce government revenue," and that it will do. If Proposition 101 passes in Adams 14, the amount of money that we receive from specific ownership registration of vehicles, it will decrease by 99%, and we estimate that at $2,160,800 loss for revenue in our budget. For points of the bill, the state will need to backfill this money, and you've already talked about that a little bit. We know that the School Finance Act last year was cut significantly to fund schools, and as Dr. Blunt mentioned, we're looking at further reductions, maybe even current year and in the future year with the Joint Budget Committee forecast that came out last week. Amendment 60 is a constitutional change that would amend several aspects of property tax, and it will reduce the amount of property taxes paid by individuals and businesses to school districts, counties, special districts, cities, and towns. As we look at the specific impact, statewide impact on K-12 education in year one, this is going to be a $337 million impact in year one to K-12 education statewide, when fully implemented after, at 10 years out, looking at a $1.5, $1.6 billion reduction. Currently, K-12 education represents 46% of the state's budget, and if Amendment 60 is fully implemented, K-12 education will be 67% of the state budget. Amendment 61, if this were to pass, would ban the use of any kind of debt by the state of Colorado and greatly limit the amount of debt issued by local governments. In Colorado, borrowing supports most public infrastructure projects. The Bell Policy Center believes Colorado will be the only state in the nation to not have authority to issue debt if Amendment 61 passes. Most school districts borrow funds from the state to make payroll prior to property tax revenues arriving late in the school year. 85% of school district budgets go to support people costs, as I'm sure the city's familiar as well. We have a lot of folks on our payroll who provide services to residents, students, et cetera. If Amendment 61 passes, Adams 14 may be unable to make payroll beginning in December, which would place a hardship on all employees in the district. The Legislative Council of the Colorado General Assembly states that borrowing restrictions will require that the state and local governments either raise fees, reduce construction, or reduce their programs and services. In Adams 14, just to close by telling you the collective impact of all three of these measures would be a reduction of revenue of $11,369,884. And that equates to nearly 42% of the district's revenue, or $1,742 per student. Any questions for me?
Yes, Councilwoman Benson.
You know, I've heard from Ken Delight, who's the executive director of Colorado Association of Schools, and as you mentioned, school districts normally are a cash store by January, February, March, because the property tax money isn't coming in. He's saying that at least 10 school districts statewide are going to have to shut down until the end of March.
Correct.
Normally, I mean, the same property tax situation will prevail, but normally, school districts would get a loan from the state to tighten over for that three-month period. 61 is going to prevent any borrowing by the school district, and it's going to go without voter approval, which has to be next November, which can't happen. And it also prevents the state from owning any money, so they won't have any money. The schools are going to have to close for January, February, and March, so I guess maybe we'll have a new, if these things pass, we'll have a new type of school year, where you go to school from April 1st through November the 30th, and you have your vacation in the wintertime, et cetera, in the summertime. Do you agree with that? Is that what's, that what you think is going to happen?
That is what many school districts are projecting, is that it could, it could result in the school district really only being open for a handful of months a year.
Do you think, are you saying sometime around mid-December, you may not have enough money to pay your staff? Or are you thinking that by the end of the year, you're going to have to close up Adams 14? Is that...
Well, that would certainly be the worst-case scenario. You know, we predict that we will be able to make do with some of our reserves, unless we were able to mitigate some of the budget cuts by transferring some reserves into, into our general fund to make the budget look a little bit better for this year. But if we keep having to do that, we're going to end up in a scenario where we have statewide restrictions on the amount of money that we have to keep in reserves versus what we can use.
So have any reserves that will be...
Those will quickly go away.
And I'm thinking that our 10 school districts that Ken Delight was talking about, they're mostly rural, I think, but those kids, they will be able to go to school January, February, and March. And I think that's, that's not just a scary thing, and I think that's reality.
Correct.
Based on what I've read and how, so, okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Aaron.
Thank you, Mr. Albrecht, for being here tonight. You know, like Councilwoman Benson said, a lot of these might appear to people like doomsday scenarios, but they're actually real possibilities, and that's the scary part of it. I did have a question about how any one of these amendments or propositions would have a, if they would have a specific impact on the new Adams City High School and the bond that the voters approved in order to build that school.
That's a good question. I think Dr. Blunt explained that fairly well, around how, as we become implemented, we'll have to pay back the dollars plus reduce expenditures based on the amount of interest paid, et cetera. So as far as being able to continue to have Adams City High School, or whether or not that would turn out to be appropriate for the state or someone, and ten consequence like that, I don't think that would happen. I think what happens is more directly to its ability to accommodate future growth. In the last couple of years, we've been in the situation of growing, whereas in the previous years, we had some declining enrollment. But as the economy tends to decline, our enrollment numbers in the core part of Commerce City tend to up, and we've seen pretty large increases in enrollment the last few years. And so if that trend continues, the economy doesn't turn around, then as our schools start to be smaller than capacity and needing renovations and repairs, then we would be limited in our ability to go forward in measures due financing to that.
Correct. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Blunt.
Something Mr. Benson just said struck me, and I was, I was trying to wrap my head around the math of it, but he said that Ken Delight said that school districts would have to wait on the property tax until it's collected.
But they already do, but they got a loan for the same.
Now, if the property tax goes down, the money that they would be waiting on would be decreasing also. Is this correct? So if you're looking at this the way I was just looking at it, not only would peer school districts have to close, after the second year, there would probably be 20 school districts to close, because that funding that they would be waiting on till April of the year wouldn't be there then, and they would be getting decreased funding anyway. So, I mean, it would look like we would have a limited school year all around the state, and sooner or later, it's going to hit our school district. You know, I was, I'm looking at it, the way I figured that would be in year three, our school district would be one of the school districts that would have a new calendar that would start probably March to June, take a break, and then August until November, and then take a break again because of reduced funding and lack of teachers and facilities, because we do have an aging school district. because we do have an aging school district.
I think it's hard to answer exactly what the impact is going to be as far as how you would modify a school calendar or how you might change your staffing levels, et cetera. Part of what we're dealing with is requirements to make certain amounts of days in the school year under the state, certain amounts of hours for students to be in school. And so, you know, if these should pass, we'll have a lot of work to do to start projecting and reconciling what those things will look like in the future. Thank you, Mr. Allright. Sure.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Carson?
Thank you for coming, Mr. Allright. You know, as somebody who spent some time at the school, I'm not sure that the public out here understands the budget cuts, school districts across the state have, because they have amended staff or programs. I don't know if anybody has anything left to cut, unless we're now talking about 60 students per classroom. I honestly, I don't know, and I'm sure you guys don't know, how we're going to go forward if this happens. It really is, we are going to come a state that does not educate our children or does not support education much. I, like I said, I've watched the cuts of school districts, and I think it was predicted that the cuts across the state was one of the largest job losses that we could see and was within our school employees. So anybody out there who doesn't think that each school has had problems things up with the budget and adjustments have taken place, and people have really come together trying to get your budget as soon as possible, there's nothing left.
Thanks for coming. I would just follow up on one thing that is important to remind folks, that the state of Colorado and this city, the school district, we're required every year to pass balanced budgets. So I think there may be a misperception that folks think that spending by governments is out of control, and in Adams 14 and in Commerce City, we pass a balanced budget every year, and borrowing is a tool to provide an explore communities and residents that is voter-approved most often. And so it's important, I think, to remind people that we don't necessarily operate like the federal government does in Commerce City or in Adams 14, and it's important for folks to know.
Thank you, Councilman Benson.
Yes, thank you. First of all, I agree with what you both said, what you made of that. What I was talking about was the effect, the impact in the first year, second, third, fourth, and fifth years, and it affects the school districts even more. And I have the opinion that it's the school districts, more than any other government entity, that are going to be impacted by these things. And that's our kids. We don't get to them, they can't really fight back. Also, let me, one of the provisions, I think, in 61, say about your school district, you wanted to lease a car or a truck, or say, a copy machine or a computer. Before you could do that, you would have to go to a November vote up the year before you could sign any kind of a lease or contract to that thing. Is that correct in 61?
That's a good question. I don't know if Dr. Long still appeared to bail me out on this, but I think he is, but I'm not sure I know this specifically.
That's what I heard. Because any type of, it describes lease or purchase or anything, and these issues were not drafted by people who were stupid. These things have been drafted very well, and they're very complex. They're only about page and half long, maybe a page long or a page and half long, but the impact, that that page and language can have. And you mentioned a balanced budget. You know, the state or any city or any political subdivision is allowed to not have a balanced budget, but there's a Colorado Constitution in 1876 preventing that. So this, anytime you hear the argument, well, we're tired of this deficit spending, they're talking about the federal government, we can't do that in the state of Colorado. I don't know if we can in any other state, but we can't have deficit spending in the state of Colorado. So we're just totally disinformed, I think, about what they're complaining about. They don't want higher taxes, they don't like deficit spending. Well, talk to your congressman, but this is a state issue, and we can't have deficit spending. That's why I have an extra minute.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Allright. We appreciate your time of being here. Thank you so much. Mr. Cardiero, who's next?
Council, I'd like to invite up Ben Dolan, and he will be presenting on behalf of the county of Adams County.
Welcome, sir. Thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, Madam members, my name is Ben Dolan. I'm the budget manager representing Adams County in the Finance and Information and Technology Department. It is my pleasure to be here today representing Adams County. Commissioners are aware of my presence here at this meeting to talk about the impact on Adams County in 60, 61, and 62. I have prepared a few slides for you to take a look at, as we have evaluated the impact of these recommendations on Adams County. The first slide, I guess I have to tell her. That's in PDF, yeah, the page. On the very top of that, is the arrow. So the first item is taking a look at what the impacts of all these collective allegations have had on Adams County going up four years, sort of beginning in 2011, $25.6 million in impact, right at the beginning of 2011. Slight increase in 2012, 2013, and 2014, $33,000, $40,000, $11,000. Adams County receives a significant amount of money from specific ownership tax. We've also had the ability to repay revenues via the voters in the past, and that has allowed us to keep money to pay for the services that we provide in Adams County. So there's a substantial impact right at the beginning for Adams County revenues. The next slide, we hit that arrow. Jobs impacted by the initiative. What we did is we took those dollar numbers, figured out, well, how many jobs would that equal? And it might not be correct Adams County does, perhaps jobs that are provided and developed, all the activities that we work with. Five valid issues. And the first one is Proposition 101. In 2011, we would have a loss, potential loss of 103 jobs. By 2014, as a result of 101, 184 jobs. Amendment 60, 218 jobs, and that stayed the same throughout the four-year period. Amendment 61, 113, so a total of 321 jobs beginning in 2011, and 416, should those corrective reductions occur. The next slide is taking a look at all of our funds and the impact specifically to our funds. County government provides a number of services to the citizens across the entire county, including jail, including our district attorney's office. We do run and operate regional parks. We do provide roads and bridges that many of the citizens of the city also feed on. Our general fund for 2010 was approximately just under $150 million. As a result of these initiatives passing, that general fund would be declined to $133 million, so it's about a $16 million reduction. The other significant part of that, as I mentioned, is also the Road and Bridge Fund would decline significantly, and the Social Services Fund. And one thing we know, the Social Services Fund does receive a lot of revenue from our federal and state sources to help match the county property tax dollars that are in the services that we provide out of our Social Services Fund and the Human Services Department. And those funds, should we redo, should our property taxes be reduced, the ability to leverage those funds, the federal state outlets also reduce, and that's not totally reflected in this particular slide. The next slide is what Proposition 101 does. We put all of our specific ownership taxes into our Road and Bridge Fund. We find that they're the, the next is what people are paying for their automobiles and using that money for roads and bridges in Adams County. The impact in 2011 would be $8.2 million. The next item would be $10.3 million in 2012, $2013, $4.5 million, and that's $14.7 million in total impact into the Road and Bridge. The next slide. So in 2011, the impact of Proposition 101 by funds is primarily impacting our Road and Bridge Fund. And the next slide after this one will show you what the impact in 2014 would be. And the $6 million Road and Bridge Fund item has grown to quote, $6 million of 2014 because a specific ownership tax was reduced over after year four. So we just wanted to highlight that for you. And then, next slide, please. And then property tax impact by funds, so the general fund was $9 million, our Road and Bridge, $846 million, which I would know we do share with Commerce City and our other cities, a portion of that mill levy. Our Social Services Fund, $5 million, the government save, $157,000, or is quote-unquote $7 million. Okay. The tax reduction by year in Amendment 61, we do the impact there. And we'll, thank you for running after I got the end of my slide. The last point I wanted to make on this last slide is just to show, we do get a significant amount of state revenue, as you have heard from my fellow presenters tonight, about the impact of the state and the state budget issue that they have. What would be the impacts if they were not able to help fund some of the activities that they fund the car, they fund Adams County activity? Because we do get a significant amount of revenues from the state in Adams County, primarily in the Social Services Departments, NASH's, our Social Services departments. So the impact there, these are potential. We do not know what the state will do as a result of lower revenues on their behalf, but we just wanted to represent how much state dollars we get in Adams County. And if the state decides to do budget cuts or passing cuts onto other entities at the local government level, there could be some significant impacts due to Adams County. I wanted to show there. So that concludes the presentation. There are some significant impacts in revenues for Adams County, and we appreciate the opportunity to share this with you tonight, and be happy to answer your questions.
Councilwoman here?
Good evening, thank you for your presentation, sir. The other night, we had a word with Commissioner Larry Page, spoke on behalf of the county. I agree with everything everyone tonight is saying, but I need to ask you something privately before you leave, because it'll take just a second.
Sure. Thanks, I'm happy.
Out for the rest of the questions.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your being here. Thank you for taking your time. I didn't need to be here as well. Thanks.
Thank you for your time.
And Mr. Cardiero, our last, we have one more? Two more, okay.
Good evening, membership council. At this point, I would like to invite to the podium Ryan Lapena with the South Adams County Fire Department.
Good evening, Mr. Lapena. How are you?
Good. Mike Corrigan?
Yes.
Senator Roger Snyder, council, staff, and audience, thank you for the opportunity. I do not have a PowerPoint presentation, and I want to preface my presentation by saying that the dollar numbers aren't quite as staggering for the fire district as they are for the previous presenters. But make no mistake, the percentage, the impact is equal for the South Adams County Fire District. Proposition 101, again, works on property tax or the specific ownership tax, and when totally implemented, it will have an effect, a negative impact on our budget of over $200,000. Our total budget for 2010 is about $2.9 million, so there's a substantial impact in what it's totally implemented in the four-year period. Amendment 60 is one that's been under the worst, and in its literal interpretation, we have to go back to the 1992 level of funding. Our mill levy in 1992 was 3.135, our current mill levy is 4.3. The assessed value in 1992 was $280 million. Our current assessed value was $786 million. Our tax revenue in 1992 was $718,000. And our revenue for 2010 is just about $3 million. A substantial impact if Amendment 60 is implemented and enforced to its literal interpretation. For that $718,000 revenue that we have for upcoming years, we currently have a lease purchase agreement for purchase of four new apparatus. Lease purchase payment on those trucks is $540,000, leaving us a balance of about $187,000 for operation of our entire fire district. Again, the lease purchase payments, when those are paid off, the taxes have to be reduced. That equates to about one-sixth of our total revenue right now. But the impact across the board for us, for the fire district, again, percentage-wise, is equal to all entities with this effect, it's just that the dollar numbers aren't as staggering as they are to the school districts. If there's any questions, I'll be answering.
Councilwoman Rondo?
Thank you for coming and presenting. Did I understand that correctly, that we would be looking at, going from a $2.9 million budget to $718,000?
That's what we are calculating. The death proposition, or excuse me, Amendment 60 is entered into its literal...
Well, that's a huge. Are we looking at, I don't know what your operating expenses are, so I guess I could foresee where we would have to close fire stations in the future. I mean, I don't know. You got this training would be terribly impacted. Does the public really want to support their fire department if they can't be trained? If you're not going to give any money for that?
That's correct. The training budget for this year is over $400,000 in training equipment and supplies, things of that nature. New accessories, replacement accessories for apparatus, things of that nature. We will not be able to lease purchase any more equipment. An average cost of an average humber is about $350,000, $400,000. An aerial can be upwards of $1.2 million.
Yes, thank you for sharing that, because I have heard some citizens in our city say that it wouldn't impact our fire department. Well, it will impact our fire department, it will impact them greatly. So even though we are involved here, there's many things, like what you're saying, that on a day-to-day basis, this is really going to affect the fire department, the ability to have service fire trucks that are in the service trade for firefighters, so they're at the highest quality firefighters. It takes money to keep these stations open.
That's correct.
So, yeah, thank you for coming and presenting that.
Because we are not a paid firm, and it is 100% volunteer organization. There's no impact on salaries, but operations will greatly be affected by these violations.
It truly comes down to people's lives. You know, it really does. Your ability to serve, you know, stop Adams County and everything that you do, you know, really comes down to lives. And, you know, you cannot put a price on people's lives, the response to fires, accidents, everything that you guys do, you can't put a price on that. And so that's a pretty heavy price to...
And so, that's a pretty heavy price to pay when you think about the ramifications of the situation with the fire district, so.
That's true. One other potential ramifications that this can have is we cannot provide the service to people in our jurisdiction. The insurance service office who rates fire departments based on their ability to fight fires and respond to fires, and that organization, the ISO Insurance Service Office, also sets rates for homeowners insurance and property or commercial insurance as well. If we cannot provide the service, the, we potentially will have an increase in our ISO rating, which will have, potentially could have an impact, increasing homeowners premium for insurance as well as commercial insurance.
Yeah, I think that that's something that a lot of people don't understand, so I appreciate you explaining that. I think that's a very important piece as well. Councilmember here.
Hi, Rod. Thanks for coming and sharing all this ad information if this passes. And I agree with Snyder that safety here and lives, more importantly than anything, will be, you know, very risky if this passes. And also, will you tell all the firefighters, I think, all the current volunteerism?
Hello. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember.
Yes, thanks for being here, Rod. Thanks for sending the word of our hand from Wednesday night for our board meeting. I apologize that I wasn't able to attend, but I understand it was a very important presentation. And there's a lot of information that I'm going to have people look out there and acquire knowledge in their hands, and try to get a lot of information. One of the points that he made is that, you know, right now, as far as the equipment is concerned, we'll have the equipment that we've got now, four or five years down the road, and that equipment starts wearing out, there's not going to be any money to buy new one. That's correct. And that, and I guess my personal observation is that we're working hard, and that we've got a volunteer fire department, but as the paid fire departments are going to suffer a lot more, you're talking about losing 74% of your program. So the paid fire departments are really going to suffer a lot more, wouldn't you say?
In my opinion, yes, they would be, they would be impacted, still very much.
Or we're going to be impacted a lot, they would be impacted even more. Thank you.
Does that mean we have a councilman, Carson?
Well, I just want to say again that any equipment is essential, any equipment is essential to what you do. The training is also essential. And when you are going to impact the training budget, I don't know if it's going to impact, but it's going to be a great impact, I would assume. When I need a firefighter because I've taken a model accident, and I need to be extracted from that vehicle, I want to help him. And we do, we do a lot of training in this department, and we used to stay that way. I don't know how anybody can function under this. I really don't know how I would survive. I don't know how I'm going to survive. So, yes, like I said, it's a costly service. And we did recently see somewhere that, here in the state of Colorado, that somebody who was paying into his private fire department.
Correct.
Is this the line where we're going, that if you want safety, you pay into this private fund so that you are protected? Because there's a cost of these things, there is a true cost.
There is a very financial impact in providing volunteer fire departments, which are huge enough.
Thank you. Councilmember.
Yeah, just to piggyback on something that Councilmember Carson said. You know, I told people that, you know, you're supposed to be saving about, what'd they say, about $1,500 a year in taxes, things that are called taxes?
Correct.
And yet, things may become privatized, so you're going to end up paying a lot more. Your cash flow's going to increase, the taxes are going to decrease, but your total cash flow over the year or two years is going to substantially decrease, because you're going to be paying a lot more, unless those services are privatized.
That's how we always add.
I just wish that everybody could attend some of these meetings like this and in here. The fact, only I'm, I won't be able to go over now, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Rod, for being here. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Mr. Cordero.
And last but not least, I would like to invite up to the podium Mr. Jim Jones to speak on the facts of how these three ballot measures may impact the South Adams Water Sanitation District.
Good evening, Mr. Jones, how are you?
Good, very good, and I'm pro- member of council, and the public. We're a little different than everybody else. Everybody else tonight has been talking about lost revenue sources and cut taxes and things. We have to have increased costs because of these proposed amendments and propositions. Amendment 60, because we are operated, our water sanitation functions are operated as enterprise funds, so that we can meet the favor requirements. Because they're enterprise funds, all of our assets, our property assets, would be taxed. That's not, it's all public property right now. We have a couple of properties not taxed, but because we're enterprise funds, our property would be taxed. We have about $330 million assets. We think that once we go through the assessment process and figure out how much we need taxed, we think that impact would be about 1.5 million dollars a year if we add to our projects. That would be a direct increase in our cost of the business. We would also, as a result of amendment 60, lose a small portion of our property taxes. It's kind of something, we'd probably be booking an increase of 11% to 16% increase, that we would have to pass on to our customers for our water and sewer costs, cleaning services that we currently provide. Amendment 61, the impact that that would have on us, if everybody knows, you're talking about water, wastewater projects, you're talking about projects that have been in the last 50 to 100 years, and you're talking about things like water resource projects, diversional structures, creeks and rivers, dams, water storage projects, wastewater plants, water plants, really expensive projects that can cost anywhere from $10 to $100 million. And we have several of those in our plans for the next 20 to 30 years, so we have some of these big projects. When we have those big projects, we feel that it's most prudent to invest for us to finance them over 20 to 30 years, so that we can split those costs out, similar to buying a home. Most of us can't afford to pay cash for that home. Makes more sense that we can function and stay within our budgets to finance this over a period of time. But if we lose that ability to finance those large projects, we anticipate that's going to take, and we've just looked at over the next seven to 10 years, probably have to have constant 7% increases in addition to everything else, just so we can have money so that we can pay cash for those big projects as they occur in the next several years. So those are huge impacts to us, and will be huge impacts to our customers. The last thing, Proposition 101, doesn't have as big an effect on us. We currently get about $120,000 a year out of some of those missing, is property taxes. So if we were to lose those, then have a 8% increase that we have to pass on to our customers. So, you know, we already know that we're going to have to do some rate increases over the next several years without these things passing. We have, kind of have what we call the perfect storm. We've got the Clean Water Fund, it was funded by the federal government in 1989, it's been tenured the last 25 years. So, 2014, those funds that the federal government gave us, we have now, so we have to start picking up the cost to operate that water plant, that's about $1.5 to $2 million. Second thing we have, we've got an aging system. We've got a 60-year-old system of water and sewer pipes, it's starting to have some issues that we need to get some attention to, to make sure that we keep up the building, so we're going to have some increases to keep up those costs. We've got a governmental agreement with Bender Water and Metro Wastewater, really good things with the community to ensure the long-term water and wastewater service for the community. But those agreements have some in costing them, so we have to be able to bring things on. So we already know that we have to do some loss increases over the next several years. If these measures were to pass, we would have to significantly increase those rate increases and pass them on to our customers, so we're concerned about that, and apply that rule to ensure that agreement.
Thank you, sir. I do have a couple of questions from councilmembers. Are you ready to ask? Okay, councilmember.
Mr. Jones, thank you for being here tonight and presenting. I think you bring up a great point that's often overlooked, except these are purported to be tax-reducing measures, tax-cutting measures, but also within that language includes new taxes, never before seen taxes on special districts. So things like our water district, our DIA, some colleges and universities, those will now have to pay property tax. And I think that's something that's overlooked, so thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you. Councilmember here.
Yes, good evening, nice to see you again, despite the other night's listen in as well. Later on, let me very shortly, I'm going to bring forward a resolution, a joint resolution with the other entities that were up here tonight. Would you like to be included with that? Or can we begin to provoke a career for it? We need to know pretty quickly.
Yeah, what you're going to do without, it's our work, we actually considered our own resolution Wednesday night, there was a special meeting, so it'll be considered a resolution for the same thing, and I didn't get it.
Well, maybe ask if they want to join, this will be very powerful without me, so. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Councilmember.
Trying to add it all up in my head, the different percentages that you got out there, and I got around 25% before you started adding in the future that you're going to have some rate increases and things coming down the road. So, not to scare anyone, but add it on to that 25%, where would we kind of end up in around about 2014 with the rate increases percentage-wise?
Right now, the kind of things that we're just normally, you know, side of these, we're looking at something around a 9% increase next year, 9% increase in the year of that, 5% for a couple of years, and then a little bit kind of disinflationary. That's our, that plus our base strategy to get to a good competitive rate structure. On top of this, so you'd be looking at in the first year, probably 28% increases just in the first year once these become effective. Then after that, you'd probably be looking at the levels around 15% to 18% for like four or five years.
Thank you, sir. Seeing over the questions, thank you for being here and taking your time to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cordero, I have a question for you, if maybe you can answer for me. I'm pretty well versed on the amendments and the proposition, but my question for you is where did, who was the original, I mean, how did this come to be? Could you give us just a quick history on that?
Well, I think that that's still the $64,000 question.
That's what I keep hearing.
There are court challenges right now, trying to get who is funded, who funded the efforts to collect the monstrosity of the water project to get these things out. And as of right now, those efforts in the courts have not produced culprit, few of them, have not produced someone who is responsible for the efforts. So we couldn't tell you right now who is behind it.
I find it really interesting, we have millions and millions and billions of dollars worth of loss, you know, that could potentially come from these three, but yet we couldn't even, we don't even know who brought it forward, or who's to blame, or who at the end of the day even started this. I mean, doesn't everyone find that fascinating? So, I just wanted to bring you that to see, because I've asked this question to several people and have yet to get a clear answer, so I see there's still isn't one. Thank you very much, your presentation, Mr. Cordero. Yes, councilmember here.
Okay, at this time, I would like to direct Mr. Gayler, our city attorney, to bring forward a joint resolution, including Commerce City, Brighton, I mean, School District 27, Adams County, Adams County 14, and I'm just saying, and South Adams County Volunteer Fire Department. And also, if the county comes forward in the next few days for the water district, they want to be included as well. Would this be ready, Mr. Gayler, by next Monday?
Mr. Gayler, just a quick question for you. Are we able to do that as a governmental entity, councilmembers, are we able to do that?
I don't see any problem with doing that. You know, we already passed one resolution, so this would just be a second resolution along the same lines, so I just want to be joined with other governmental entities to adopt a resolution that I would assume then that they would also be adopting.
So then we would just be looking for consensus this evening to have draw out a resolution that we could look at next week? Okay, all right. Councilmember.
Yes.
Councilmember. 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 And that's the S for myself, so to be honest. And I look forward to seeing that resolution here next week. Okay, moving on. I will now ask Atkins to be manager, Matt Meehan, to introduce that to provide us an update on Adams, $120,000, Highway 85 intersection, preservation and property annexation update. Who will be our presenter tonight? Mr. Akar? All right. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, acting mayor and members of council. Let me pull up a diagram really quick, if you may help, if you have some questions. Great. This is a joint effort project that has involved Commerce City and Adams County, along with the property owner. And it goes back, we've been talking with the county for well over a year, on how to solve the potential dilemma that they had. They had a property owner, what do you start, Adams County's been spearheading an effort to preserve Brighton for a future rate-separated crossing of Highway 85 with the 120th Avenue. This is a project that is way out in the future, but one of Adams County's high priority projects, and one which Commerce City has agreed from a transportation standpoint is a high priority project for Adams County. Continuing work that Adams County's done on 120th Highway and Bridge on the South Flack, and then future improvements that we see in the future to wipe 120th east toward the airport. What happened is Brighton, a property owner bought a piece of property that was located generally in this area here, north of the current 120th, but it would be within the slope of where the rate separated crossing would be. Adams County had some property that was left over from when they did the 120th improvements here that was approximately in this location. That's in Commerce City's growth area. The property owner had actually submitted a permit and plans to Brighton, they were ready to build, and everyone discovered that this was about to happen. And to keep the costs down in the future, not have to relocate a business, the county came to us, along with the property owner and Commerce City, and, you know, how could we work together to continue to let this person plan and build with the budget he had set, but also recognize the need that this property would be to add some commerce at some time in the future? Also, Adams County was looking for partners in this right-of-way preservation project. Commerce City let them know that the financial statement we've already contributed, repurchased some property here several years ago. On the south side, we became aware of the potential for the intersection, great separation. That was, I think it's about four lots, that was part of Stillwater, part of the Stillwater subdivision in this area. So it's decided we should acquire that for houses to build. And we calculated that if we don't collect some fees if it's built in the county instead of the city, we've made a pretty good contribution to that project, which will benefit Commerce City. With that in mind, staff have worked together, we've gone down the path of allowing them to build in the county and then immediately add it to Commerce City, which is required due to some... due to some agreements with Water District and General Improvement District. So we've moved that forward. Of course, as you'll see in the packet, both Adams County and the property owner did sign the agreement, they actually signed the agreement once we said, hey, we think we're done with the agreement, it came back to us, signed. So, we're playing catch-up in some respects, but we think in overall, this will be a benefit for the community and for the city to get this property annexed into the city and also provide some preservation for Brighton in the future. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Aker, thank you for your presentation. And I see no questions on the board?
I have a question.
If you're not on the board. Councilman Bullock?
If you could point out again where this property is that we're talking about?
Right here. Property that the landowner is building on, which is in our areas currently riding this area here. You drive down 120th, right next to kind of red and yellowish metal building being built on the south side of 120th.
And it's on the west side of 120th?
West 185. West 185, Tomahawk Truck Stop, or not Tomahawk, Tail feathers is in this area.
Okay. Okay, where are you speaking about now?
Any other questions, Councilman Bullock?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aker.
If you come back in the next week or so, we'll have a resolution to sign with you. Thank you.
Appreciate that, thank you. Okay, moving on to administrative council business. Councilmember Menno? Do you have any administrative business?
Just one thing. I, well, I'll just say, I'm even more incredibly impressed with our city publication. It's really taken on that flavor of being a comprehensive community update rather than just getting news from the city. I think that's great. I would like council's consensus, moving forward with the idea I presented last week about the Derby businesses that may have been impacted by the construction, if we can maybe offer them some free ad space in our ex-publication in conjunction with announcing the ribbon cutting for the Derby Plaza next month. So I just wanted council's approval to work with, I'm assuming it would be Mr. Querero or Ms. Morris, to offer that to the businesses of Derby.
Our city attorney is appropriate to, or city manager?
I'd just like to give some feedback. Staff's been working on a policy since it's a public, we're not in competition with the private sector. And we've been looking at policies on this, and we took your recommendation to heart last week, and we're looking at something, we would like to come back to you and see how we can best handle that. And our hope maybe is next week we'll come to you.
Great, thank you.
Okay. If you have a point down the line, we just go, if anyone will just press the button, if they have any administrative business, I see Councilman Bullock?
Yes, in our publication, and I've marked this up a couple of times, it shows my picture, it shows a cell phone number that I don't know who that belongs to, that is not my cell phone number, and I need to get my correct cell phone number with my picture because a lot of people tell me they call that, and they've got somebody in the city that is not me. I would like to get it corrected.
We'll get that corrected.
Okay, thank you.
Can I get that corrected for him? Thank you. Okay, I don't see any. Councilmember Menno?
Just to piggyback on Mr. Bullock's, that my cell phone number is also wrong on that. It at least goes to my city office phone though, so I get messages that way, but it would be nice to have my mobile phone on there, so just.
I think on behalf of staff, we're going to check everybody's cell phone number.
Thank you. Awesome. And then just one other thing, I was walking around Derby today, the large tree that we planted in the plaza looks a little unhealthy, so I don't know if staff has seen that or not, but the branches towards the bottom are kind of drying out, so I'm just worried about the overall health of the tree because I think that's going to be like the centerpiece of the Derby Way Festival, so if staff are just looking to that.
Thank you, Councilman. Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, Acting City Manager Metneen, look, oh, we're looking, you know, just taking a quick look at everybody's names and the phone numbers and email addresses. It took six years to get my name spelled properly, so if you could just have us look at that, that would be great. Appreciate that. Okay, Councilmember Benson?
Do we allow editorials in this location? Or editorials are opinions?
We haven't been approached by that yet.
And one of the great things that I recall about the Beacon was that there were editorials, and people had the ability to send in letters to the editor or whatever, that was a major part of that, in addition to reporting the news, to have a chance to write into the Beacon. So I don't know, how would the rest of the council feel about them, to allow letters to the editor or editorial opinions to be submitted to the editor?
City Attorney Gayler, or, how do you guys, Acting City Manager Metneen, how would you like to weigh in on that? Because this is kind of a different situation than a privately-owned newspaper, so I'm not sure how that works.
I'd like, there's probably a legal answer and a policy answer. Just talking to Deputy City Manager Metneen here, would she like to look into the options on that? And then we'll get back to the council, whether you give a legal opinion, may not have any real basis for what you want to do with policy matters.
Is that acceptable to you, Councilmember Benson?
Could we ask for a consensus of the council, whether the council can direct it, that'd be done?
Do we need a consensus of the council, sir?
Would this, would agree?
I agree with you as long as council feels comfortable with spending time. It's not a question that's been posed, so I think it's a good question.
Is that acceptable for you, Councilmember Benson?
Sure.
Okay. We're going to start with the reports now. Councilmember Menno?
Well, I'll just say, I think I get a chance to say anything about what Jim just brought, but I think it is an interesting question, and I look forward to the report coming back from staff. I think part of the question is, we need to ask ourselves which direction we're going, if our city newsletter, or I don't know what we'll call it, our paper, City News, is going to be a kind of a comprehensive community update from the city, or we're actually going to try to turn this into a newspaper? That's obviously something that's for study, and I think it's a good question to ask. Other than that, I don't have a report.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Benson?
Yes, thank you. Well, we've heard several times about our War B last Wednesday at 122nd, and I wanted to thank Councilmember Teeter, she and I put about $1,000 of our discretionary money into financing this. We sent out about, what, I guess about 3,800 mailers, we did do local calls, and I thought it was very successful. We had, not only the people I mentioned to you, but we had about 85 citizens out. So we, we had more in January of '08, and I think that we're going to have more as time goes on to continue to do this. I would just like to ask the council to think about spending, you know, a few thousand dollars to pay for these neighbors, because I think they have a major effect on the attendance that we get at these meetings. And I think we just about killed up the cafeteria at the second grade elementary. Anyway, I want to thank Kathy Teeter for throwing in the incoherent comments in this event. Also, I want to thank Miss for doing a lot of the legwork and handling a lot of things, I guess. Miss, stand up for me. And I want to thank Councilmember Carson and Councilmember Moreno for being there to give us their moral support, and Townmate for his presentation, and I guess Jim Jones was also there giving a presentation on that of the water board. Ricky Morris was there, Chief Blackwell was there, and Jason Leslie to give us a financial award was there, and Ross Skelton was there photographing the event, so I guess you can see that on Channel 8.
It will be.
It will be.
We're talking about that.
If anybody wants to catch that. But we had, we had a great presentation by a lot of these people, about 60, 61, 101 again there. We couldn't urge anybody to vote for it, yes, because that was a city-sponsored meeting, it's like a council meeting, a lot of people giving the facts. And we had a couple of people from School District 27J, we had Roy Barnett from the Fire Department, and we had Larry Pace, County Commissioner Adams County, given us the impact that these measures would have on the county. So we said, I want to thank all those people for being there and helping us have a very successful meeting. The next day, September 23rd, we had an E470 meeting. And I guess one problem with these E470 meetings is a lot of the stuff, a lot of the poor stuff that we go over is the subject of an executive session, which I can't share, I can share that with a lot of the other, and I can share it with members of council, but I can't just talk about it here, so I want to say we had an E470 meeting, and we had a good executive session on some issues, and they'll become public, I think, as time goes by. Also, last Saturday, I was asked to be part of the panel on 60, 61, 101 by the AFSCMB Town Hall in Denver, we had the four people on the panel, we had a special, that was one, since that was not sponsored by government entity, everybody could express an opinion about what their, what urgent yes vote or no vote on those various issues, and so there were a lot of people expressing their opinion. And then, of course, on Saturday, we had the meeting of Commerce City Historical Society over at the Wright Center. That was a very entertaining event, that we were here, people talking about Commerce City back in the 50s, and how it looked, and what they first moved here, and how things have changed. That was very interesting, we had a relative newcomer, I wonder if, you know, maybe 40 years from now, somebody will be asking me to speak at the Historical Society, meaning about the early days of reunion. Thanks very much, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Carson?
Margaret, we don't have a report, I just wanted to thank Councilmember Benson and Councilwoman Teeter for the working. It was very nice to attend, and I think that it won a good turnout, and I think that some of our citizens, I did recognize some of the Southans there, who realize that whether it's your ward or not, you are more than welcome to any of these orgies at any time. And thank you, staff, because you did do a very good job there. I know it was a lot of work, I think it's a great outreach, and I would like to see maybe that we can continue along these marks of this type of outreach.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilmember Bullock?
Yes, I'd like to tell you all the things that I missed by being in Philadelphia at the National League of Cities leadership summit, leading the charge. I missed the ward meeting, and I regret that. I missed the Historical Society meeting, and I regret that. I missed the National Prescription Take Back Day, even though they were doing that in Philadelphia Hall, so it was a national-wide thing, I didn't have nothing to give them, so it's like I missed it. But what I did receive was a lot of good knowledge at this summit, and taking charge of your cities, and not shirking or shorting or shrinking from your duties as council people and staff and everything that, you know, we are put in charge by the citizens to do a job, and sometimes that job gets a little runny, but it's something that you get better with it as you go along. And the one thing that somebody said that just resonated with me, is that if you have a crisis, get it all out, give it out to the public, because bad news does not get better with it. So if you knock it off right away, and give everybody information about bad news, it's done with, and all you have to do is proceed to the good news from there. But if you try to hide something, it's something that will just keep reaching up and biting you, because it will always do that. So I mean, if there's one thing I will always remember, and I'm going to stop, that this is one of the things that, if we ever have a problem here in Commerce City, we will get it out, and the citizens will know as much as we do right from the beginning, because once we got it out there, all we have to do is actually make it a better situation. Thank you, that's my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Bullock. Councilmember Johnson?
Good morning, morning, Mike.
Councilmember Teeter?
Yes, currently, I'm being redundant now, but I must thank you, Mr. Benson, for putting most of the organization together on the ward meeting, and I think it was very successful. We had a lot of positive comments from people, and thank you to Ms. Carson and Mr. Moreno for attending, that meant a lot to us, and the Sam Man of CML, the Bush speaker, Brittany, Tom, Josh, all the speakers and the staff that put this together. And like I said, a lot of times people that live far away, with their busy lives, can't travel this far, and so I said, we're bringing the city there, and it was the low receipt. I also, on Thursday, attended the Adams County Economic Development luncheon, and wish I had not stayed there and listened to the speakers, because they had two expert speakers on what's going to happen when the Bush cuts tax cuts, and especially to small businesses, and I don't think I want to owe my business to them, and complications and impacts when the new healthcare plan comes. So I just wanted to update that, and you don't really want to know all that anymore. Thank you.
Okay, just a couple of things from me. I attended the Historical Society barbecue over at the park there, and what a great event. That was a lot of fun. There were all kinds of people there, we had some great cooks, we had Jean and his son cooking, so thank you for the cooking, they were great hamburgers and hot dogs, and we had Troy undercooking, and I just really appreciate everybody that went out there and helped set up and take down all of our work that was put into that. We had lots of visitors, we had Doug Dar and Mark Nightassle, if that makes his name, yes, he's the one running against Doug Dar for sure. We had Congressman Paul Mather there, we had, gosh, there was a slew of people out there. Who am I missing? Jean, help me out.
Yeah, everybody that was in for it.
Yes, we had a great group, and I mean, it was just lovely, and people were asked to bring something, that it was a historical, you know, little something that had a historical value to the city, and then you were supposed to guess the item that it was, and some of those items were pretty interesting. I found that to be a really interesting thing, and hope that we continue to do that. And there was a movie made of all of it, and everybody, you know, got to say who was there, and just for the historical value, and making the stories out, and the seniors and everything, really, I think, you know, for the future, those are just going to be irreplaceable memories. So I want to thank everybody that was a part of that. It was really a wonderful day. I'd like to thank Carolyn Keith in the Park and Drive department. I came to Carolyn about a week ago, or two, when some of the citizens over in the Freedom Park area asked me for another bench, there was only one bench over there at that park and faced the sun, so when the children were playing in the afternoon, it became very warm, and so they wanted another bench facing the other direction, and Carolyn and her team got right on that, got that bench installed, so thank you for that. And I wanted to compliment the cultural council, I hear very good things, it's moving along very well, and basically the reform, new logo, new ideas, new everything, so, you know, I think it's really great when something that, you know, kind of stalled out, you know, turns around, and is really having a good thing. So I want to thank Councilwoman Moreno, and everyone who's participating on the cultural council, for getting that up and running and moving forward in a positive direction. I think that is all I have for now. Councilmember Benson, did you have something?
So I just wanted to say, I forgot to mention Sam Man, he's the executive director of Colorado Municipal League, he did, he reminded me of that, because I said I'd emailed everybody, I should have already copied and emailed him. He gave like 10, 15-minute overview of 60, 61, 101, and he had various other people going into the impacts on their various government, and he had a total of about 11 people making statements, and I guess, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, talking about the impact on the various jurisdictions of 60, 61, 101. So, I just wanted to recognize that Sam, because he did give a lot of, he's the best person in the state of Colorado, he gave a 10, 15-minute overview, so.
I have a great feeling of respect for Mr. Mann and everything that he does, and he does his best to make his way all over the state when things come up that are of importance to, to the municipal league, and to the state of Colorado, so I would like to thank staff as well for making his appearance at your working, for all of the work that he does for the state of Colorado. As you all know, I will be heading for San Jose in just a few hours, and one of the things that we've been working on is, I've been forwarded to Washington, and is sitting on the president's desk as we speak, so I hope to have a great report to present in the near future when I return. So I hope to have a great report to present in the near future when I return for what is happening with the public safety, current provisions, during COVID, so looking forward to a long, but exciting and busy week coming up, so I want to wish everyone a great week, thank you for being here this evening, and we are now adjourned. Oh, I forgot, I'm so sorry, we hold back on that one moment. Acting City Manager Nealon. Hey, you need to go like this, you know, like it.
I thought you were changing things up for us, keep us awake here, so. We gave you your council update and most of it is, and we communicated via email, but just wanted to get a hard copy. I'd like to highlight one thing that you may not be aware of when we try to anticipate questions. Through the work of the annual, there was a governor's energy office, has some grant opportunities. And to get ahead of this, we went ahead and looked at all those and there were over 47 funding announcements and we looked at those and only two the city was able to go for. So we want to highlight that we take it seriously. One we were, we were denied or didn't work out for us and one we're still pursuing, so we're trying to anticipate questions. A friendly reminder, the communication audit, our interviews are trying to end by this Friday and I'll contact you to see if we can set something up or just, like your questionnaire. The important thing for us in the city council is if there's other people we should be talking to. We do have a limited budget and I committed to work with the consultants and prioritize early this week so if there's additional people we need to go talk to. In that, what I was thinking is the editorial issue is part of our updated council, I think it's gonna be early November of what the consultant recommends to us, I would like them also looking to the editorial issue, though I hear the importance of the Derby ads and I want to move that forward quickly. And the same with the ward meetings, some data the council have, when we passed the motion to ensure we committed to you after the first two ward meetings to give you an update and we'll come back to you and say, here's what we spent, here's how they work, and then we can see further direction from you, so I will work with this on that. Good news moments. Last week, our Parks and Rec Department went up to the parking garage for their annual conference and low behold, we received three awards. They included the Colorado Parks and Recreation Association Outstanding New Professional was awarded to Jenna Johnson, the Recreation Coordinator for Teens. The Columbine Award for Administration Management for the Commerce City Parks and Rec Department for Creating Community, a staff training and community awareness program. And then the Columbine Award for Programming for Commerce City's Parks and Rec Departments Healthy Schools Partnership. And I think that's a fantastic recognition and we will be sending something up so council can formally acknowledge the good work the staff is doing. Brittany, as we recorded last week, was at the Aviation as a Catalyst for Economic Development Conference and she got very good information back from Dallas and Detroit and how that economic development has steadily liquefied to the areas surrounding the airports and they called it Aerotropolis. But what she also learned is EIA's in the process of hiring a consultant to study the economic development opportunities inside and outside of the airport and Commerce City will be included in this study and Brittany will be taking lead in the effort, so that's another good news moment. Shows good how we go out and staff participates. We got a congratulations to Lieutenant Stanton Asanya, today he returned back from the FBI. And so I asked Commander Book and he said, he's just a little bit smart now, so. That's a good thing. It is Baca Baker and Book are the, I mean, the FBI National Academy, are the only three others from our force that have gone, so I think that's a great accolade to see for the government. Economic Development, Brittany Morris just wants to make sure we remember we have the Business Appreciation Breakfast this Friday morning and sit here in council chambers from 7 to 8, 7 to 9 a.m. and the city will present four awards to the outstanding businesses in our community. Miss, the two flyers on your diocese, one is with the race on 10/10/10 with several of our community members. And then the second is the Night Health Fair, which was the third annual for Commerce City Family Night Health Fair. This year has changed the form of where it's being hosted, it's gonna be at the Adams City High School. It's on Saturday, Sunday, November 6th and 7th. Laura's been working with the boards and commissions. And last year, when we established the budget to celebrate our board, our participation by boards and commissions members, that budget was cut through some recommendations of the boards and commission members and then we brought it to council. So this year, we took the money and membership and you'll have casual reception with light food before city council meeting and then we'll have them come in and city council will recognize each board and commission meeting and this will happen on November 1st, so we just want you to be aware of that. And then Public Works gave us an update on some of the projects. See that schedule for completion, the Highway 2 project from 64th into Quebec. Aren't any weather delays, it's on October 19th we should be done with that project. And Public Works has the overlay project on Colorado Boulevard and it's expected to be complete by the end of this week. And the last, the seal-on-ship application that Fairfax Park Neighborhood has been completed, so I hope that was comprehensive for you.
That was, I'm sorry I forgot you because you were loaded with information, so thank you. City Attorney Taylor?
Yes, city council will be pleased to know, and I want the citizens of Commerce City to know that last evening I spoke to a sizable number of citizens regarding the upcoming election in November and I emphasized in my talk the severe effects that passage of Amendments 60, 61 and Proposition 101 would have on the ability of all levels of government to provide services to the citizens of, of the state. And when I, when I say all levels of government, of course, I'm including the state, county, the cities, school districts, fire districts, water districts, library districts, any special district. My talk was well received, there were lots of questions and you know what's surprising? Is that as much publicity as there is out there regarding these issues, there's a surprising number of people that really don't know what those issues are about. And this was an older group of people and well-educated people and the talk was very well received, but it was very informative for them because it was news to quite a number of them what was really happening with regards to the campaign and with regards to what would happen if the issue should pass. So I just wanted to know about that and I hope that more of those opportunities can occur both for you as city council members and for us as staff to be able to present the information regarding these issues.
I appreciate that, City Attorney Taylor, I really do. I think that there are quite a few people out there that are still not really, you know, understanding how these things are going to progress, so I think the more information that we can get out with the better. The one last thing that I have to mention that I almost forgot was on October the 5th from 5 to 7 at Messy's Coffee Shop, coffee shop there in Derby, we are going to be having a senior summit where the seniors are invited to come and sit down with city council and voice any of their concerns or comments or anything that they want to talk to us about. So we would like to formally invite all of the seniors to come to Messy's Coffee Shop. Again, that's October the 5th from 5 to 7 and I look forward to seeing the seniors then. Now, if anyone doesn't have anything else, we are at this time for your face.